Karen, you got it all.
So Karen, it was gonna be Connie's turn tonight, but now it's your turn. It's into the fight.
Sure.
If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence. And then we'll ask Councilmember Karen Tinkles-Ains to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we call the roll.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tinkles-Ains?
Here.
Mr. Mrs. Tackett? Mr. Thompson?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Ms. Tackett called, texted me earlier this afternoon, and she is under the weather this evening. And we just thanked her for not making the rest of us under the weather. So Connie will not be with us tonight. Before I go into the real meat of our agenda, I'd like to just take a brief moment of personal privilege and congratulate all of the city council members on your reelection.
Thank you.
I'm just delighted that this council returns intact. I'm sure it's happened before, but several of us have sat around and we can't remember a time when all eight of the council members returned as a body. But I think that the work that this council has done for nearly the last two years certainly earns you the right to return. And I look forward to working with each of you for the next two-plus years. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly, let's see, regularly... We have two? Oh, special meeting. That's right. We had a very brief called special meeting on October the 27th. So is there a motion for approval?
Motion second.
Thank you.
Second.
And second. Any, if there's no further, any question, if there are no questions or changes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And for the public's benefit, we approve the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting as we began that special council meeting the last time. Also, in your packet, each council member should have received a copy of our latest check register. Could you please indicate if you've received that register? Thank you. Okay. We are at that portion of our meeting for public comments. And we have Selena Stevens.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hello, everyone. I'm returning again for the fourth year in a row now. We would like to do our Schoolhouse Champions 5K, which is the run that we started about four years ago when Lemon's Mill opened up to benefit the schools here in the county. And it's a cooperative event that our PTAs put on. And we're hoping, we're talking to a fifth school this year to add a fifth school in. So we're very excited about that. The plan right now is to have that on April the 22nd, again at 5:30 in the evening. Everything would pretty much be the same. The only catch in our plans is that you guys are looking at some alternate routes for the runs. So I'm in cooperation with Darren Allgood at the police department to consider which route we would end up taking once you guys approved those routes. I understand there's three, I think, that are in consideration. But we would use whatever the approved route is, obviously, so.
Good. And we've been doing a lot of work with the police department on what are the best routes and our best way to service those routes for everybody's safety and convenience.
Yeah. I think we started out last year, we ended up with about 500, I believe it was 576 people registered for the run. My only concern is that wherever we start and finish this thing, we've gotta have enough room for those people to congregate. Because at least two times during the day they're out, they've all got to be together. So I've talked to Mr. Allgood a little bit about that and just making sure that we can work with the college and the city to make sure everything's safe.
Good. You've also got the chief of police and the assistant chief of police. And others here are hearing your request. In your council folder is a completed application for the 5K. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion.
And second. Any questions from, for Ms. Stevens? Not all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Good luck with your amount.
Thank you very much. Hopefully you guys can come join us.
Yeah, there you go. Ms. Stevens was the only person who had signed up for public comments. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council? Thank you. And with council's permission, there's a couple of things I'd like to change on the order of the agenda. Next on the agenda would be mayor's comments. And we all know that that lasts a while. Out of courtesy to some of our other members here, Chief Bossy, I think, has a special presentation from the police department to one of our citizens. So Chief, if you could do that.
Actually, I have a couple, sir. If Michael Burke could come forward, please. Several weeks ago, we were backed up on calls for service. And we initially had no units to respond to an accident at Water and Main Street. Traffic was backing up. Michael witnessed, actually witnessed the accident and took the initiative to step in the middle of the street and help keep traffic flowing and keep people safe and away from the scene. And we wanted to recognize him for that, a citizen stepping forward that way. This is a chief's commendation. It is for assisting the Georgetown Police Department in directing traffic after a traffic accident. Thank you for your dedication to the community.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
And then next, Gerald, if you want to come up. I had the privilege of working with Gerald Florence when I was with the city of Lexington. And let me tell you what this guy does, did. We always encourage our neighbors to look out for one another. Watch out for each other's property, that kind of thing. Well, not only did Gerald, was he watching his neighbor's property, but he witnessed what he believed to be a residential burglary, went out and investigated and approached the individual that was, he believed, had made entry into the home. And in a conversation, while he was talking to us, getting us to the scene, the individual caught on to what was occurring and attempted to flee the scene. And Gerald was able to hold him there till we got there. The guy had, in fact, broken into the residence, had stolen a large amount of property and is connected to other burglars as well. So definitely deserves accommodation for those kind of actions.
I believe that, Officer, that may be the sharpest dressed young man that's ever walked into these chambers. Good for him. Thank you very much, sir. And I also thought that, as a matter of courtesy, that we have members here from our ethics, the city ethics board, to present some changes to the city's ethics ordinance. And rather than make them suffer through mayor's comments, I thought I could go ahead and call this piece of business, David. Council has been aware that you all have been hard at work revising the ethics ordinance. We emailed the ordinance out to the council members about three weeks ago. And David would be happy to, any comments that you have in summary of what you've changed or what your commission has attempted to accomplish. Glad to have you and Mr. Davila. And if you'd introduce your other members here as well, too.
I'm guessing, based on the election results from last Tuesday night, that if they ever need a stand-in for our new vice president of the US, that you would be the obvious choice. Is that correct? You sure resemble it.
It is. People said that enough to where I think I'm gonna get a buzz cut, but that's all right.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm David Thompson with the city ethics board. We have some of our members here. I want to introduce David Davila, Karen McKenzie, Doug Griggs. Rich Archie is not able to be here. And hopefully, this is the only time that you all will ever have to see us together, so. But I want to also acknowledge the work of our city attorney, Andrew Hartley, in putting this ordinance together. And our, and the best elected city clerk in the state of Kentucky, Tracy Hoffman, who coordinates all of our meetings, keeps our documents, and keeps us in, on track when we have those meetings. So we do have an ethics ordinance before you. A little bit of background. I'm sure most of you are aware that ethics came up big because of the Bop-Trop, Bop-Trot investigation into our legislature back in the early 90s. There was a call for ethics legislation. It not only included the legislature, it also included all cities, towns, and counties. So in, I believe it was December 1st of 1994, this body approved a, an ethics ordinance for the city of Georgetown. So it's been right at 22 years it has been in effect. And I believe there's only one change in that time, 2012, with 12-001. That's the only time that it's been changed in those 22 years. And let me give you a little bit of historical perspective real quick. Nancy Kerrigan, the Olympic skater, was attacked. We had no World Series because there was a strike in baseball. Tom Hanks won an Oscar for Forrest Gump. Rick Pitino had not yet won his first national championship at the University of Kentucky. Bill Clinton was president. We attacked Iraq. And on a June summer night, millions of Americans watched a white Bronco chase down a California highway in a slow-speed police chase, of course, the O.J. Simpson situation. So this ordinance that we have has been in existence about 22 years. In 2014, the Kentucky League of Cities developed a model code of ethics. They used something called cityethics.org as the basis for a lot of that. I got a copy of it and gave it to each of the members of the ethics board and told them, "At some point, maybe we need to take a look at it." And this was in early 2015. We came back late summer of 2015, decided we did need to look at it. So their assignment was, take the existing ordinance, take the model code from the League of Cities, go over it word for word on both of them, and we'll get back and discuss it. Well, that meeting took three hours, and we still didn't get through it all. We had another meeting about a month later. I think it took about an hour and a half. So we've spent a lot of time on this. What we're bringing to you is not the model code. What we're bringing to you is not the original ordinance. It is a hybrid. There are a lot, there's a lot in the current ordinance that we like. And there are some changes in the model code that we are incorporating into this that you have before you. I was gonna mention them real briefly and not in any certain order. We're adding a language that says, "Ethics board members, if they ever run for office, be it whatever office it might be, they must resign immediately." That's not covered currently. Under businesses, we're adding the term limited liability entity. And we're also taking out the last two words of the current ordinance, which says "for profit," because we think that sometimes there may be a nonprofit association or organization involved. So that's being deleted. We are adding to the definition of employee seasonal or temporary. Both the current ordinance and the model discuss different classes of cities. As you know, I believe it was in 2015 when they did away with the classes. So it's now under home rule. So what you have is going to reflect that home rule language rather than the classes of cities. We did not find that the amendment 12-001 was ever officially incorporated into the ordinance. It was listed as an amendment, but not in the ordinance language itself. So we are putting 12-001 into the ordinance. Under the contents of the financial statements, we also want to add memberships of any board. That's not currently in the language. And speaking on the financial statements, that is one area that I think we're gonna start enforcing more than we have. Tracy sends out notices to all of those affected by it that have to file the reports. And she will give them a deadline. We will get together, review them. We'll find out that there's still several that did not meet the deadline. We'll give them another deadline. Sometimes they meet it, sometimes they don't. In both the current ordinance as well as in the model code, there's provision for a $25 fine. We're gonna start enforcing that. You know, if we've got elected officials, if we've got appointed officials, including the ethics board, we're subject to it as well. And we can't abide by a deadline, then we think there should be some kind of provision in there to penalize the people. Because she gives enough time for that form to be filled out, and it doesn't take 15 minutes. The hardest part is getting a notary, of which she is, if you need one. We are, we're 99% satisfied with the current code on the makeup of the ethics board. And we do want to refer to it as the ethics board. In some places, it was called commission; in some places, board. We're asking that it all be the ethics board. We are deleting in both from the original as well as from the model code, language that said, "No more than three members of the board shall be from the same political party." We don't see if that's relevant, because this body is not elected on political party. I have no idea what these people, what party they're affiliated with. I have no idea what party you all are affiliated with. There may be cases, obviously, in the legislature, and I think in the city of Louisville, where it's done by party affiliation. But we don't see that it's relevant in Kentucky or in Georgetown. So we're striking that language that no more than three may be a part of any specific political party. The model code of ethics and cityethics.org both recommend three-year terms for commission, for board members on the ethics. We want to keep that at four. We understand it is difficult to get people to serve on that body. We don't see any reason to change. Certainly, if you want to, that's up to you. But we think it should remain at four years. It also says that lobbyists should not be members of the ethics board. I told the ethics board, if they want to include that language, I need to get off, because I am a lobbyist of the legislature. I don't think that it affects my job in any way, being on the ethics commission. So we are not incorporating that language into the ethics ordinance. I believe that, have I left out any part, fellow members? I believe that covers it. If there are no questions, or if there are questions, I'll entertain them. If there aren't, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you.
I do have a question. On page four of the part that's highlighted under there is H and G, and that's new in there. What, can you explain that?
F and G?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I actually caught that error in there earlier today, and I meant to make a note of it. That should, on F, it should say, "Persons who make an election campaign contribution." I think that was implied, but it needs to be inserted in there.
Mayor, you said, "If somebody makes a campaign contribution..." Okay, how do they record that? How's that recorded? Explain that.
Go on for the rest of the story. What this says is, it defines the world of the people with whom you cannot, who cannot get a financial gain from your action or inaction. And it already, that prohibition is already in there, and it kind of expands that prohibition to people who have made a campaign contribution to you in excess of $200.
Okay, does that, that just then fits us that are running?
Yeah, I mean, naturally. Well, I suppose you could argue that it counts people who had that in the past as well, who are employees or officers.
But is that what we're saying or not?
Oh, it says during the past election cycle, so I guess it would have to be...
Elected officials.
It would have to be current elected.
Well, just a question on that. Since we have to, if we spend over $1,000, we have to fill out the forms for the state, why would that not cover that instead of having to add this into it?
Well, I think they cover different ideas. This isn't requiring me to file any particular statement of, "Here are the people who donated money to me." This is simply saying those people should be included in the list of those who cannot get privileges based on your office. It's kind of, it's protecting two different things. One is the transparency and the disclosure, and this is a prohibited financial interest position, provision.
Okay, let's just use something. Georgetown Baptist Church, they're not going to, but that's why I'm using them. They give me a campaign contribution of $500, okay? And I filled it out and sent it in to Frankfurt. Frankfurt has it. Then Georgetown Baptist Church comes up, and they got a planning and zoning issue. And I'm gonna vote in favor of helping them out with their planning and zoning issue. I just saw you all back there, that's why I used it. Someone come up and help them with their planning and zoning issue. All right, so where does that, where does that fall under in ethics?
It actually would be covered by both F and G.
Okay, all right.
Which in the G is a non-governmental civic group, social charitable or religious organization, of which he or she is a member. Now, you may not be a member, but it could be covered under that. But I think you have to read that in context with the rest of the provision, which is, "No officer shall take, intentionally take, refrain from taking, or fail to take any action or take any discretionary action, influence or attempt to influence any other officer or employee to take or refrain from any discretionary action on any matter before the city in order to obtain a personal or financial benefit for any of the following." So if that situation came up, and you were a member of that congregation, you would have to recuse yourself. And if that, that organization had made a campaign contribution to you in excess of $200, you would have to recuse yourself.
Wow. That's awful. I mean, that affects lots of what we do. Lots and lots and lots of what we do. $200 is not much in a campaign, at times. There's times I haven't gotten $200. But $200 is not a lot in a campaign. And that seems like that's a little, a little low number there to have influence on which, how you would vote. I don't know about that. I have to think it over, I have to see if I can just understand it and think it over a little bit.
I mean, that provision was taken from the model, the model code. The amount is subject to, you know, if you all want to tweak, or if you want to take that provision out, that's your all's call. That's, that is one of those model provisions. And I can see, I can certainly see the merit in it. But I can also see, I can also see how it cause, it can cause quite a bit of trouble. You gave a pretty, you gave a pretty good example of something that's relatively innocent that would be covered by...
Right. So I could just see it going into something like that, that, but I don't know. I have to, I had to mull that one over. That one, I was confused when it was in it, when I read it. The first time, I was kind of confused as to what it meant and how it was gonna be. And the thing is, in my mind, is you report this to Frankfurt. So if anybody wants to say, "Oh, well, she did this because she got $200 from the church, so she voted for them," that's on the document there. So it's just, I was just wondering about that. Anyway, I'll have to think about that one. See if I can figure it out in my head.
The non-governmental civic group, social charitable or religious organization, we actually had a pretty hefty discussion about that provision and the kind of an effect it could have in these situations. And it is true, there are a lot of situations where, where that kind of benefit is, it can slip past you pretty easily. And we have a lot of situations where civic organizations come before the council for approval for this or that, that might lead to a financial benefit.
The only thing with that is trying to, you know, you know me, I'm not thinking of this straightening around. I'm trying to think of the bigger picture of things, or sometimes what the what-ifs. But I'm trying to think of even on a civic group coming and asking for something special, and we vote for it, and if I'm a member of the civic group, and just say for, I'm a member of the civic group because they can do the event, then they're gonna end up coming back and buying flowers from me. Not just because they can do the event, they're gonna do that anyway. But I voted in favor and helped encourage the event, and then they come back and they buy flowers at the shop. Did I then violate ethics for that or not? If they hadn't been able to have the event, they wouldn't have bought the flowers because they didn't need the flowers. But they did, and then they ended up coming to me to buy. So I mean, that's where I'm thinking, are we, and maybe I'm being over the top, because the city bought a flower arrangement for me, and I made them pay with it out of their own pocket not to take for $35. But that's where I want to make sure that's clear on that.
But in that example, wouldn't the civic group has the option to go to any florist in town? So it's not as if you're a sole-source vendor or anything, so...
It would only be if there was some proof that they, you know, you made the decision in order to get them to come buy the flowers from you, or something along those lines.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be, because I'm gonna say, oh, they're gonna come talk to me and say, "Oh, we're gonna have this event, da-da-da-da-da, we need the city council's help." And then I'm gonna say, because in the course of being a salesman, I'm gonna say, "Sure, the city would probably be more than happy to do that. But by the way, oh, if you need flowers, remember, you can get them, you can get them from me." Kind of thing. Well, then they get the event, and I voted for it and encouraged it because they came to me first. And then they come back and say, "Okay, we need, we need the flowers." So indirectly, I did. But not, but innocently, it was what I would do to try to get the business. So, I mean, I don't know. I'm probably reading too much into it, and I know I always have a tendency to do that, but...
I think you've brought up a valid point on, particularly on the non-governmental groups. It is, the language is a little bit loose. And I think it comes down to, and this may or may not be appropriate, but it comes down to whether the ethics board feels like there is some unjustified personal or financial threat that you, that this organization has obtained. And whether the council member truly influenced that by making a decision. But the solution is to strike that language if it's that big of a problem.
Well, it's also a little more specific, Karen. It would require that you be an officer or a director of the organization wanting to put the event on. If I read the whole statement...
Oh, that's right, is an officer or a director.
And that changes the conversation fundamentally, I think. If you're simply a merchant that's trying to work with an organization, I don't think you should have restrictions.
But I've been on boards before, or organizations, and been a part of that. I thought, "Oh, that'd really be a great idea for the city to get involved with it, da-da-da-da," and inadvertently come back around, not intentionally, but invertibly. And so that's why I just want to make sure that that's not, because we're still a small town. I know we're growing and we're still, but we all interact in each other's lives so much that, you know, we're gonna bump into this unintentionally many times, I think. But we're not the size of Lexington or Louisville, where we don't know half of the people in town, pretty much. know half of the people in town. Pretty much, we know most of the people in town one way or the other. So, I don't know. I just have to think about it and see if I can understand it a little clearer.
Board members have any comments that they'd like to add, or?
You know, if you want to change it, I mean, it's, it's in your all's hands now. There's just recommendations.
You know, and I wonder, uh, it's rare, but occasionally, when you're running for office, someone will write you a thousand dollar check, which is the maximum that you can accept. And I, I wonder if. If that shouldn't become the limit here, rather than an arbitrary number of two hundred. Mimic state election reporting law, which is, which is ethical, I, I think on its face. Now, obviously, we'd have to change the language. You couldn't say a total of more than a thousand dollars, 'cause that would be breaking the law. But I'd wonder, David, if that would be more palatable. If, if we just mimic the language in, in the registry language.
So if it's a thousand dollars, then you wouldn't have to recuse yourself?
Right.
So you could take whatever up to that.
Up to that. But then if, if you're gonna take up to the maximum that the registry allows, why have the provision? 'Cause the registry's already done it.
Right, that's what I kind of think. In that case, it's kind of really.
It's covered, it's covered anyway.
You can go down to Frankfurt and pull it and see who's giving to the campaigns and.
And you can do it online.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do it online and you, and you can see. And I mean, I don't, I think it could be something if the ethics board has to make a decision on something, they could pull it, if somebody, if they thought somebody was doing something, they could pull that down there and, and say, well, there may be a correlation going on here, 'cause every vote, da-da-da-da-da, kind of thing. But, or they're voting outside of what they normally would, maybe let's take a look at it and see what's going, if there's any connection. I don't know.
Did, and you all spend some time on this?
Yes.
On the, on this clause, David?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
So is there a suggestion then for modifying that dollar amount then?
That was my first thought, David, but when I think it all the way through, if we modify the dollar amount up to the maximum that the registry allows, the registry already has a limit that we're following, it makes that statement almost redundant.
I know, but.
And I don't want to take authority away from you all and, and, and your policing of local ethics.
Most elections I don't get a contribution, so it's not, not one I don't mind talking about. So if somebody gave Karen a hundred ninety-nine dollars versus two hundred dollars, then it, it's a midpoint.
Uh-huh.
Right.
So I guess my thought is, what, you know, I, I guess I'm kind of wondering, the question is, where do you, where do you draw that line? I guess somebody thought two hundred dollars was appropriate, and I guess that's how.
Yeah, if you think that's appropriate, yeah, if you think. What do other, I mean, have you all looked at other cities, what they do?
No, we haven't.
Okay. And I don't think it's a problem.
So, here's a good one. Let's say the home builders, 'cause the home builders are pretty active. What if they gave everybody on the, you know, that served in the election, a two hundred dollar contribution, and that would prohibit?
And that's, and that's happened in the past on, on that, pretty much. Everybody gets a, a check from a certain entity and we all get a check from them or, or offered one. So then what do we do? Nobody votes on anything? That's, see, I can see that happening too, if we all got, that's a way, that's a way to keep us from voting.
That's the example I was gonna bring up, because the home builders came here in opposition to an ordinance that we still have on our agenda. And then at a political function, they were handing out checks to everybody.
Yeah.
I refuse to take it, okay? 'Cause I refuse to take any, any contribution.
I refuse to.
I refuse to take it off.
I did too, yeah, I don't take.
I don't want to take anything.
When, when that happens, are we not being, are influence being bought? And is that not why this is here?
But a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars is not, if that buys your influence and that's.
I don't even know how much it was. I didn't even look at the envelope. I didn't take the envelope. I said, take it back, I don't want it.
I don't think that buys your influence. Now, when you're talking a thousand dollars, you're a little bit more beholden in a community, but for a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, you're not that big deal. I mean, no thank you for anybody that wants to contribute in the future, but, you know, it's not that much money.
Somebody else's in the futures, their price not, may not be as high as yours. It's, it's still an effort to buy influence, and, and that's, I don't like that. I'm okay with the two hundred, maybe it should be a hundred.
But the state allows you, the state allows it to be done, so why don't we just use the record of what the, go back to the mayor for the government.
Karen, would you rather match up with state's saying?
Yeah, I think I would, actually.
Okay, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah.
You just want to change that to a thousand dollars, or do you want to have some kind of language?
Yeah, I think that would be.
I, I'm against that, so I don't, we probably would have to vote on an amendment to that.
I'm against it too.
Well, one thing's for sure, a Georgetown ethics ordinance is not gonna stop political contributions from occurring, in Georgetown or elsewhere. And no matter how strongly council members may feel about the topic, we can't restrict, I mean, our ethics ordinance can have a provision like this, but we're not gonna change registry of election finance law here. It's not our authority to do. And we're not gonna change that, that age-old practice of there being political contributions. It's just not realistic. So let's write an ordinance that matches reality, not some version of reality that we'd like to have that ain't gonna happen.
Anybody got any ideas?
Apparently their idea is the two hundred.
Yeah, I think so. That's what they want to do.
This affects, I guess, every elected official that's, I mean, from the mayor to the, does the fiscal court pass the same?
Uh, fiscal court has a, a ethics ordinance. Uh, in some areas, it's quite different from this one. Did not compare that language. I don't know when they last amended theirs.
Yeah.
And they didn't, I don't think, have the KLC model code of ethics to go by.
So, if I could distill this down a little bit, so, so we could get past a rough spot. Out of, out of all of the contents of the proposed ethics ordinance, are folks comfortable with the other provisions? Just want to make sure we're, I want to limit our, our discussion to where, where we need to limit it.
I had, I had one issue.
Yes, sir.
And that was the, the majority of parties. We remove the no more than three from one party should be represented. I mean, in this day of deep, deep partisan division, I think we need that more now than ever.
Even though we have the, I was actually coming to the different conclusion, simply we have the benefit and the luxury of running in nonpartisan races in the city.
And that's the party, right, Mr. Reddick?
Yeah.
You've also got another provision that you're gonna have to have at least three parties represented then, because you, you're supposed to have two alternates on the ethics board. So if you've got seven people and no more can be three, you need three parties represented. But I don't see.
Well, we can change that.
I have no idea, and it, it's not gonna come into play in, in our consideration. Well, is, is he a Democrat, Republican, an Independent, or what? Or what, what these members are. We, we've never discussed politics, and it's not gonna come up in, in our discussions. Yes, it would in the legislature. Yes, it would in the city, but it's not, I don't see it ever being an issue on the others. But you would have to have, because you have to have two alternates, supposed to have two alternates on the ethics board, you would have to have three parties represented if you go with the no more than three from any one party.
You could change the wording to no more than three on the main board and no more than four total.
It's in your all's hands if you want to change that, but.
I just, I see a need for it. It was there before.
It was there before.
And I have been involved in partisan politics around here, and, and believe me, I, I think it does make a difference.
We didn't, we, we have not seen anything whatsoever as far as, as politics go, and don't think it's necessary. But, you know, it's, it, yes, it is in there, and I believe it's in the model code as well. If you want to leave it, that's fine. We'll have to look at what the, the makeup, because none of us were asked what political party, uh, are you affiliated with when we were asked to serve on, on the ethics board.
Mayor, it sounds like we have two issues to address. I like the idea of taking out the partisan side of it. I don't like partisan politics anyway, and I understand your concerns and the issues, so.
I don't like either, but it's there to protect against it from happening.
Maybe.
It's just sometimes harder to find board members when you have to.
Yeah, that's the reality.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
I just don't want to see it happen like it happened on the state and federal level where one party's in control and they go after the other parties because they have a majority. We see it all.
I don't know, I feel like we're talking about the ethics board.
Right now, you have no idea. That's what I'm saying. It might be a party control right now, which brought a good ordinance to us. But they have no idea who they are, what party they are. They might not even be in a party.
I know one of them.
I know Dave. Now, we know one of them real well. I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're, I'm sorry. We know one of them anyway. The other two.
David, they're talking about. They're talking about the young lady, they're talking about you. I want just a minute to read this again to see if.
Take a time out here.
There is much in an ethics ordinance that is built on trust and faith. There is a reporting requirement. There is a financial reporting requirement. And the financial disclosure form for the city is slightly different than the financial disclosure form for county. We get to the same place, but it, there's slightly different questions. I've had the chance to fill out both. But the paragraph that, that we're struggling with, the two hundred dollars, if we go all the way back up to the top, it all falls under number three, and then, then these are A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, under number three. No officer employee shall intentionally take, refrain from taking, or fail to take any discretionary action, action, um, from anyone who meets these criteria. And that can obviously be a family member, et cetera, et cetera, that's listed. We're talking a lot about specifics of a paragraph that starts with, no one shall intentionally take. The wording of our ordinance is not gonna make someone's intention clear. I, I think we're arguing about details that have little impact.
Right.
Or we're, we're, we're letting an issue that has little impact hold us up. I do think that we should not intentionally take action, or refrain from taking action, or not be a good elected official unless all someone gave us a campaign contribution. I think we all agree with that. The state has determined we can't take more than a thousand dollars from any one person. We're, we're debating whether or not we, we can prove that someone intentionally took an action or refrained from taking an action on, on the cause of a campaign contribution that happened. I don't think this council's capable of that. I don't think the ethics board is capable of that. I think we're establishing guidelines to work toward. But unless we, we've got some magic way to look into people's hearts and minds, we're simply establishing guidelines that we expect to be followed, with no way of, of knowing what some, somebody's mind or heart. And just restricting it further than, than what the state has already determined is a legal financial contribution, just seems not to accomplish anything to me. Chuck, I know you feel very strongly about political contributions, and you've never taken them, and you probably never will.
There's no problem with it.
But, but, but that's not the normal circumstances, and most people are going to accept campaign contributions.
Well, I think it's one thing if you accept it from individuals or groups, and that's kind of the, the thing that we're talking about here.
When you're in the mayor's position, since the mayor and I both run a race. There's a lot of money going on for even a small town, small town race, and, and there are, there are influences that the mayor has that's even greater than the influence that a council has. And I just think that, that hampers the mayor's position as well with that, with, what's there, so.
Say you can't take the contribution, it says you can't decide on something, a policy that benefits them.
Yeah, that's all it's saying.
Well, I mean, that can easily arrive. We, we've all seen four, four votes.
Exactly, yeah.
The mayor has to make that decision.
Yeah, and the mayor can't, we can get by if we either don't take campaigns, it's not a big deal, or we take a hundred dollars from this person or whatever. We can all get by, 'cause it's not that expensive of campaigning. But the mayor's race in Georgetown, you're talking twenty thousand dollars plus to do that, so you have to take some substantial campaigns or contributions with that. So, that's, that's, maybe I was looking at it from even that perspective, even more so than from this perspective, but I think it kind of hamstrings the, whoever's running for mayor on how they do and what they do, because in the back of their mind, they're thinking, okay, I can't take this because I'm in favor of this project over here, and they're wanting to give a campaign contribution, so now I can't take the campaign contribution that I need, blah, blah, blah. It just, I don't know. I just personally think when you fill it out with the state, that's, that's what, what we're supposed to do.
And I think we've met the proper standard, once we fill out the registry stuff. I want us to have a strong ethics ordinance.
Right.
And I think that we will, regardless of how we land on this particular paragraph. I don't think this will get a unanimous vote from the council, but I believe a majority of the council might lean toward, uh, that we change that two hundred dollars to one thousand dollars, which mimics state registry law. And we, I'd be, like to hear from the rest of the council. I'm okay with stripping out the requirement for political parties of either, of any color or stripe. And I think that since we're in a nonpartisan environment, we can get by with that. I've never, in, in my thirty years of being in elected service in this community, ever seen our ethics board initiate a witch hunt for political purposes. I don't think it's gonna happen in the next thirty years. I think we wouldn't, we won't tolerate that. I would, I would, just if there's enough people that want to go forward, I'd like to change that dollar amount in paragraph F to one thousand dollars.
Could I offer a suggestion, and it may, and it may not fly, but why don't you change F to somehow read, Andrew, you're the wordsmith, to somehow read in conjunction with the state reporting regulations or something like that? Can we do something of that?
I'm not sure what you're.
I'm not either.
Trying to get to.
Instead of just saying a thousand, this, okay. Are you starting to see where I'm just trying to get?
I don't think that word would.
Would work, okay.
I don't think it would substantially affect the substance of the provision to reference that.
Okay, thousand's fine. It's fine.
We need to move this forward. We need to move this forward.
Thousand's fine.
But, uh, how about if I s- ask for a show of hands of people who could support the idea of, of, uh, accepting the ethics board recommendation that the political party affiliation be left out of the ordinance?
That's fine.
So you don't.
It doesn't end there. Because you're reporting to all your financial stuff to the state every year anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Open records.
And Chuck, I'm not trying to run over you here. I'm just trying to see where a majority might lie.
I'd rather you do that. I'd rather you do that. In that way, we don't have to vote down or up or down ordinance just on one thing.
Right.
Yeah.
We can weed out the little stuff.
So I think we, we've settled that one for now. How many people could get comfortable with simply changing this $200 number to a $1,000 number? Three? That's not a majority. Somebody will have, have to make a suggestion.
There's always a third option. Just take it out. I mean, it, it is worth stating that it's not in our ordinance now.
Right.
It's been that way for some time. It is, it is a good provision, but it, it sounds to me like it, you all feel that it runs contrary to kind of the, the fundamentals of, of politics. And then there's nothing wrong with that. But that, if you're looking at options, those are your three options. You put 200, or you put some other number, or you just take it out altogether.
I think you put the number there for a reason, right? When you all did, I mean, you, I mean, if you don't have any number, it's a moot point.
Well, I mean, take the whole paragraph out.
Oh, yeah. But if you take the whole paragraph out, I mean, you're just kind of getting rid of it.
Then you would be limited to what the registry allows.
Right.
And if you go back to number three, which is the opening sentence of this whole thing, "No employee shall intentionally take or refrain from taking." I, again, I don't know how you prove intent at either this level or the Ethics Commission level.
You, you can't, uh, and you can't define, or you can't, uh, verify a, uh, a willful violation either, you know, intentional, willful, those are terms that just, as you say, you have to look at their heart.
Would there, uh, is there a majority of the council that could be comfortable, uh, with striking F entirely from the document?
That's fine.
One, two, three, four. That actually seems where the consensus lies. With striking F completely. David, we, we don't want to not take your all's good work and adopt it as you brought it to us, but is that something that you and the board?
We're fine with it.
If we struck F entirely, and, uh, and we, we've already decided that a majority can get comfortable with stripping the partisan affiliation out. Then with that understanding, David, are, are you all okay with the first reading tonight of this type?
Yes, sir.
Or, or council, we, I don't want to prolong your agony, but we could also put the first reading until the next meeting. But if we've reached a consensus on what, on these two points that seem to be what people wanted to talk about, I'd much rather go ahead and have the first reading with, with these changes.
Yeah.
Do we need to change anything in this summary? Because I'm thinking, yeah, we do.
Yeah. You can, we can strike this one sentence and it, it'd be fine.
Which one?
Five lines down at the end, add persons from whom the officer or employee received $200 or more in campaign contributions.
All that and after that too, civic ordinances?
Actually, you start with the word persons. And go through and. Keep that part. Keep the word civic. Let's make sure there's nothing else. What else did we say we were gonna?
David, sorry about the time, but, but we're making, we're making sausage here in real time. So thank you for your patience.
So we decided to leave that as it was?
Yes.
Taking the three members out? Okay. Then you, then you're good with the summary.
Okay. We're going to go ahead then with the first reading. Council doesn't vote on first readings. We, we have first reading and then, then we have two weeks for consideration and we'll vote in two weeks. But we'll go ahead and proceed now with first reading, striking the one provision, David, and leaving intact your all's recommendation on the political party affiliation.
An ordinance amending the Georgetown Code of Ethics summary, amends the Georgetown Code of Ethics to make various altercations to definitions, add definitions for non-financial benefit, financial interest, household, official act, personal benefit, personal interest, relative subordinate, and transaction. Clarify throughout the code that ethics rules apply to officers and employees of city agencies. Strengthen provisions prohibiting officers and employees from using position or influence for personal or business gain. Civic organizations of which the officer or employee is a member to the list of persons prohibited from obtaining personal or financial benefits from the officer's action or failure to act. Expand the list of those persons and businesses with whom the officer may have a financial interest. Modify the conflicts of interest in contract provisions to match the state law requirements. Clarify rules on receipts of gifts to indicate the $100 threshold is per year, per source, and to replace exception rules with a specific list of exceptions. Strengthen post-employment restriction language to prohibit compensation for services rendered on behalf of any person in relation to matters on which the officer and or employee worked while in service of the city. Make technical change to misuse of confidential information language. Change title of honoraria section to fees and honoraria. Create a new section prohibiting complicity with or undisclosed knowledge of others. Violations of the code. Create a new section mirroring state incompatible office requirements. Create a new section requiring withdrawal from the participation in actions or discussions where the officer or employee has a conflict of interest in establishing parameters for withdrawal. Expands requirements for filing financial interest statements to all board members with policymaking roles and to those employees and officers with certain responsibilities. Add memberships on any board whatsoever to information required to be disclosed in financial interest statements. Change penalty for non-compliance with filing requirements from misdemeanor criminal charge to civil penalty of no more than $1,000. Make clarification to neo- to nepotism language to correct ambiguity. Require any port of ethics member who files to run for the city office to resign from the Board of Ethics as soon as possible thereafter. Eliminates requirement that no more than three of the ethics board members be of the same political party. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324. Introduced in public review for the first time November 14th, 2016.
We would anticipate second reading and hopefully action on November the 28th. So thank you all very much for the work you've done on the ordinance. I appreciate it. Yes, sir. Thanks. Now, since the council can't escape the inevitable, I'll go back up to mayor's comments.
You think we ought to skip that since Connie's not here and she seems to have such an issue with it?
She enjoys it the most.
Let's just tell her you didn't have any comments.
Yeah, just tell her you didn't have that night. She'll want to come back.
Is there a gentleman here from Kentucky? Susan, you are here. I'm sorry, I didn't see you behind the row of people that just left. I will not make you sit through mayor's comments.
Please, uh, don't, Tom, don't.
Again, with council's permission, I'd like to drop all the way down to item 12A. And it's simply, uh, our friends from Kentucky American to present us with the grant. So we'd be happy, Susan, for you to, to come forward. And Mr. Jackson, is that right? Good.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Susan LaChum, External Affairs Manager with Kentucky American Water. And back in 2011, Kentucky American Water started a grant program specifically for firefighting and emergency services organizations in our service area um, to assist those men and women who are heroes every day truly for all of our communities. Um, as you can imagine, with any water utility, there's a long history of working very closely with firefighting organizations. And so especially during this time where we're getting ready to celebrate Thanksgiving next week, it's our pleasure to offer a grant to the Georgetown Fire Department, um, uh, fulfilling a, a need that they expressed with some personal protective equipment, specifically some safety vests. And so with me this evening is our Field Operations Manager, Gerald Jackson, to make the presentation.
First of all, just like to say that we're very appreciative of the relationship that we've had with the department over the years. And we're thankful for the opportunity to provide the water service necessary to meet their firefighting needs. So on behalf of Kentucky American Water, we'd like to present this grant to the Georgetown Fire Department. And we are hope, in, in hopes that it will support your efforts, uh, in meeting the needs of the community and protecting the community that you serve. And thank you again, and we appreciate all that you do.
And here's our fire chief, uh, John Ward. That'll need to be kept for the company newsletter or something.
For the company Facebook. Isn't that what we said earlier?
You got a police officer to take a picture for you. There you go. I mean, our police officer does more than just.
You might give him your phone.
Yeah, this picture needs an upgrade, Susan. I can tell.
Karen, Karen.
I wasn't in it.
Okay. And you're still hiding. John, did you apply for this grant?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I'll say this, you know, we're very blessed on our prior department, police department, on how they go out and look for grants and stuff to help us from saving money and get finding grants to get stuff that they need.
And actually, we, we, uh, since it's a grant and we've accepted it, uh, we, we do need to approve a resolution.
But it's great that he does stuff like that, though.
We can read the resolution or, or in the interest of time if you'd like to.
I'll make the motion.
That motion, thank you.
There you go.
And there's a second. Thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 It's amazing how quickly we accept money.
Yeah.
Even if it's over 200 or less than a thousand, we'll.
We can talk anything else to death, but we can take money quickly.
Thank you all.
Okay. Mayor's comments.
Mayor's comments.
Okay. Most of this is just, uh, things that we want to make sure council's aware of and anticipate for future meetings. We have been approached, uh, the, the, the longer-serving council members, I started calling you old council members, but I figured I wouldn't do that. Careful. Longer-serving council members, uh, have faced this, uh, several times before, but we have been approached by the Catholic Diocese of Lexington to issue bonds, uh, for the diocese that they will actually use to refund, uh, another bond issue that they have. I assume they're taking advantage of a, a more attractive interest rate or something of that nature. The, the amount of the bonds that we have been asked to issue is $10 million. Uh, these are the bonds where, uh, we are not responsible for their repayment. There is no mortgage on our tax stream. There is, our tax revenues are not at risk for interest, principal, or penalties. We don't have any of the issuance cost. We are simply a pass-through, uh, as we've been with, we've done this for Georgetown College and some other agencies, uh, in the past. They need this transaction done by the end of this calendar year. Their bond council had first asked if we would consider first reading of a bond ordinance tonight with second reading to come later in November, which would give them the entire month of December to finish, uh, their bond requirements. I was just concerned that that was too quick to ask the council to have first reading, uh, even though it's, it's, it's a routine piece of business. It's a very large number.
Yeah.
Uh, and I wanted to make sure council was comfortable with that. Uh, I discussed it, uh, with David in the finance committee meeting before the council meeting. Wanted to announce it to the council during mayor's comments. We would expect at our next meeting, uh, on the 28th of November, that we would have first reading of this bond ordinance. And, uh, then the first meeting in December would constitute second reading. We can then publish the bond ordinance and meet their time schedule. Very clear in the ordinance, uh, the important paragraph is typed in all capital letters that we have no liability for this debt and no part of our, uh, our operating statement or balance sheet are at risk.
Add one thing that is technically it's our deadline. There, if we did it January 10th, they wouldn't have a problem. We would have the problem.
We want to, cities have the right to, to, uh, issue up to $10 million in tax-exempt bonds per year. Since it's the last month of the year and we don't need to borrow money the rest of this year, we're happy to do this deal for the church. If we let this spill over into January, then we're affecting our tax-free bond issuance.
For us.
For 17.
Yep.
So it's, we're willing to do this for the church, but not if it costs us our ability to borrow next year.
Right. And it makes, it makes their investment more appealing to an investor as well. Without us, they wouldn't be able to
That's right.
offer the tax-free option.
So that's just a heads up of what we'll be doing, uh, at meetings that are coming up pretty quick. We continue to talk about the, uh, brush at the, uh, Community Garden and the fact that sometimes trash is finding its way into that. And we have worked with the state and the solution is going to be, it will be fenced and locked. That will cause, uh, the people who use the Community Garden to have to be able to access the padlock. But that's going to be their issue. We'll have access to it, but the general public will not.
Right, it's probably best.
So it will only be the Community Garden folks and our public works employees and we'll get that solved. We once again, uh, received no bids on the car dome roof job. Uh, we didn't think that we would because we were still working with the transportation cabinet's restrictions on how we can bid this. Uh, we have now asked, uh, in writing to, uh, for those restrictions to, to be released so that we can get somebody to bid on this job and move forward with our church transaction. They've asked us to present a, uh, docu- documented timeline on what steps we took when. So we're hopeful very soon we'll get the flexibility to find somebody to do that roof and spend the $100,000 grant.
Will that release us from prevailing wage requirement?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
No. There is no waiving that.
Since it's federal dollars, we, we've pierced the threshold on prevailing wage at $2,000. So.
Get less for your money.
Federal dollars, so when the state does right the work, it's not going to matter.
It will not change that in, in any circumstances.
Even if the state changes their law, it won't change this federal situation.
Unless the feds change it. You never know.
Have discussed with the, uh, Finance Committee, uh, and I, I think anecdotally, we talked with the Fire Committee, I hope. We've, uh, we have another damaged fire truck. I think I mentioned to you all that we have found, uh, a, a very detailed inspection of our, our, uh, reserve ladder and pumper. It's a combination quint. That was our, our key reserve unit. We found cracked frame rails, uh, which is probably the end of its life for us. Uh, working with Chief Ward, uh, and his staff, we, uh, we need a really strong unit to go into our reserve line. When we get, we believe that when we take delivery of the truck that we have half-funded in this year's budget and that we'll continue. in this year's budget, and that we'll continue, we'll finish funding in next year's budget, Chief Ward's front line will be good. With the addition of, if we replace this quint, this combination ladder, truck, and engine with a used vehicle, we think the reserve line will be in good shape. But absent this combination ladder and engine truck, our reserve line is lacking and we're having to borrow a truck. So we have, we've searched nationwide, and we have found a used quint, a used truck with a 100-foot ladder and the engine that we need, mileage that we think is reasonable, and hours that we think are reasonable. We've sent a group of firemen to Texas to evaluate the truck. They held it for us for a period of time. We've struck a transaction with this company to take four units in on trade. We want to clean up the garage, we want to get rid of some of this equipment that is not functional and probably isn't going to be under our watch. So if we trade in the quint with the cracked frame rail, we have another engine to trade, and it's an older one that we don't think is adequate for our front line or reserve service. And then we're also going to trade in the two old rescue van, the big box vans that we had as rescue van. So getting rid of four vehicles, the original price of this 2002, 2003 quint was $350,000. So they're expensive even when they're old. Through the negotiations that the chief and his staff have done, and these four trade-ins, we're looking at $250,000 to purchase this truck. We had indicated to you last time that through negotiations with KLC, we achieved $140,000 settlement from the building at Suffollette Pool that burned down. And we mentioned we had a place where we would probably need to spend it. This is what we had in mind. So we've got a $250,000 balance on this used truck. We would like to spend $140,000 we got from the insurance settlement, and that would get us down to about $110,000 that we would have to cover from the budget. That was an acceptable transaction from our perspective, but we have to, it gets questionable about how do you, how do you bid and meet legal purchase requirements when you're buying something used? So Andrew and Stacy have worked together and have led us through a process where we had issued a bid document, and we kept it very short. We only gave seven days for people to respond. Bids will be open tomorrow. We're working with the dealer, if they'll give us an extension, we were supposed to make a hard decision within 10 days of inspecting the truck. If they will give us an extension, we will wait until our next council meeting to ask you to vote on making the purchase. If they will not give us that extension and we're at risk of losing the vehicle, then we may ask you for a special council meeting to make sure we can complete this transaction.
Do you need it tonight?
Yeah. With, with, a vote with anticipation of all plans following through?
We won't have got, open the bids until tomorrow. So I think we can't put that cart before the horse.
Yeah, it'd be a little awkward.
But we think we've, I think the chief's found a great solution that we can manage in our budget, and we'll let you know about that as soon as we know. The audit field work has been pretty much completed, although I still see stuff in our conference room, Megan.
Still there.
Okay, the audit field work is nearly complete. And with that audit field report, I just wanted to remind everybody that you will receive, or you did tonight, a fraud questionnaire.
Just fill it out inside it and land right there.
Good. Be sure and fill those out, and you can either mail them back into the audit provider, or we'll give them to them.
Mailbox down here, I can just stick it in the mailbox.
Yeah, yeah. Now, see, I wanted to draw your attention to another check in the check register. Anytime there's a check that's out of what I think is real normal, I want to make sure we draw your attention to it. There's a check in your check register in the amount of $3,500 to the University of Cincinnati Foundation. And the purpose of that was the design studio that we're working with the students from University of Cincinnati and local Scott County students, the total cost of that exercise was $7,500 to cover the cost that the university had. I've been, I've been working on raising that money, and so far I've raised $4,000. I didn't want to make the University of Cincinnati wait any longer on their money, so I asked Megan to cut a check in the amount of $3,500. It is my intention that we raise that $3,500 and return it to the general fund. But that check is in your check register today, and if anybody noticed it, I just wanted you to understand why we had written that check. Let's see, last thing is, there's been some very positive news out of the airport recently. Of course, they recently were awarded the $1.2 million grant for repaving of the runway, and that will happen in the spring. We've gotten the grant, but the paving will happen after the weather improves in the spring. They've also been successful in their work with Thoroughbred Aviation. Thoroughbred Aviation was a spinoff from the RJ Corman Railroad Group, and they're the ones who do the avionics repair and airframe instrumentation, et cetera, et cetera. They have leased the old hangar building at the, or the old terminal building, the original terminal building at our airport. They've also rented one of the larger hangars adjacent to the old terminal building, and they are getting ready to break ground to build a new hangar for themselves. The Airport Board is going to do a 20-year land lease with them. The airport will own the hangar at the end of the land lease. But in, as this real important transaction is occurring and we're gearing up, two of the key Airport Board members who have been working on this project are scheduled to roll off of the Airport Board at the end of this year. And it's a real inconvenient time for that to happen. They have approached the city and the county about, is there a way for those two Airport Board members to continue to serve, particularly during this sensitive time of a transaction? The county has already taken an action to allow this, but I don't know exactly what they did.
Well, actually, on the board appointment, if you don't reappoint-
They're automatically still on it.
Continue to serve. We talked about that, Karen.
Because how long do they need to stay on to finish the rest of it? Are we talking six months, or are we talking a year?
I think we're talking a year longer. So I was on, we thought about that, and I asked Andrew about it, and I'm uncomfortable doing it for that long.
Because you're asking, you're asking that person to be on that board in violation of our ordinance, essentially.
Well, and plus, if I do my job, I'm supposed to appoint people, and it would be me not my job. So I'd like, Andrew's going to check with Glenn Williams to see exactly what action the county took, since they've already taken some action. But it would be our hope that the council would approve some mechanism to let these two people continue to serve. And I'm not sure what that action will be, but wanted to make sure you're aware of it, and we'll bring it back to you.
Who's the two board members?
Martin Thomas and, I saw a list on there, I could tell you.
Never mind, I didn't put you in that pressure.
That was a lot of pressure.
The pop quizzes he has a problem with.
Going all screw.
The other thing that, just airport-related, last Thursday, I met Martin Thomas at the airport right about 5:15, and we pre-flited and took off about 5:30. It's the perfect time of day because the heat is died down, so you can fly low and not be bumpy. And we did a, about a 30, 45-minute flight around Georgetown, right about dusk, at 2,000 feet where you can see everything. And it is remarkable what the city looks like from up there, where you can see the projects underway, and you can see how they fit together. And that new interstate exchange is so obvious because the bridge is stark white and the pavement's all black, and the access roads. Martin and I have talked about, I'm not, this would be difficult to organize, but we would like to organize an evening or a Saturday when we can have maybe a couple of pilots meet us at the airport. And two years ago, we started our council service with a day-long tour of Georgetown. I think this time, we'd like to try and get you all a ride around the patch. I think every member of this council should fly in and out of the local airport. I think you should have that experience. It's a really first-rate airport, and the ability to see Georgetown from the sky gives a different perspective to it. So we're going to be talking about that, and I assume everybody would be game for-
I'll go.
A trip around the patch.
I just think we might want to do three at a time or something, you know?
You told us that.
Yeah, don't sit me in back, I get airsick.
See, there you go.
I'm not the only one.
I love to fly.
Okay.
Really hadn't said a word over there. Oh, she done left, she heard flag, she goes off.
She posted. Wait later. Tell her when she goes back.
We've still got a bunch of meat to go in this agenda, so thank you all for hanging with me.
This is the funniest part of the whole, you know.
We've done, as council's aware, we've been working on the comprehensive plan. Actually, a number of you council members have been working directly on the comprehensive plan, serving on committees.
One of, only one left.
And-
What comes up?
The next step for us is to approve the goals and objectives of the plan. Council should take some comfort from the fact that two other cities and the county have already adopted these same goals and objectives. So we're going last. But Joe, with that introduction?
All right. I was going to give a short kind of summary of where we are, how we got to here. I'll make it even shorter.
Thank you, that would be, that would be appreciated.
And then I guess I'll, I'm here with Matt Summers from our office as well, and Matt's, and Megan, Jan have been kind of leading this effort along with me, but, so Megan couldn't be here, but Matt's here. This comprehensive plan update's required every five years, as we've talked about before. This time, we're doing a broad kind of update rather than just looking at goals and objectives. But KRS planning statutes requires any community with zoning to have a comprehensive plan. And what the planning statutes require is that the legislative bodies approve the goals and objectives at a minimum. They don't have to approve the whole plan once it's complete, but we intend to bring it back to all legislative bodies. But you have to approve the goals and objectives. With the kind of comprehensive update that we're doing this time, we started way back in fall of last year with a series of focus groups to kind of identify the issues in the community. Then we formed an executive steering committee, which three members of the council are on that. Early, Mr. Lesby and Connie Tackett, Ms. Tackett, are on, have served on that executive committee. And then we held two public meetings that were attended by over 160 members of the community. And then we formed six subcommittees, which each subcommittee was a subject area that will eventually be a chapter in the plan. So there's, those six subcommittees have met since about January of this year, and that, we've worked through the goals and objectives through those committees, through not only committee discussions, but through the public meetings where we gather an input. Through our website, we have a website up that you can monitor the work of the subcommittees if you're not participating on one of them. It's called GreatScottPlan.com, and you can follow on that website the work as it's moving forward. We do have, at this point, we have a draft version of goals and objectives. These have been presented to the public at a public meeting in July, I believe. They were taken to the executive committee, and they were approved by the executive committee in September. They were taken to the Planning Commission, they unanimously approved them or endorsed them in late September. As the mayor said, they were taken to the City of Sadieville and City of Stamp and Ground and Fiscal Court, all in October. So this is the last stop on the train. They were unanimously endorsed by all the legislative bodies, I think in particular because they went through such a kind of comprehensive, broad, public process in the drafting of the, of the goals themselves. There was some discussion at executive committee about whether the, this is a regulatory document, and we wanted to make it clear that it's not. This is just a kind of a policy guide, and we're putting a paragraph in the comprehensive plan itself that'll clearly state that. But I put it in the summary, and I think I got this, these in the packet a couple weeks ago, but on the first page, you can read the second paragraph. This kind of explains the role of these goals. The goals and objectives are a guide to assist decision-makers as specified in KRS planning statutes, and should not be viewed as a regulatory document. These goals have been developed over several months of public committee work and public meetings, as I mentioned. They reflect overall desire of the community. Each, each particular goal and objective may or may not be applicable to every instance or situation. So these are broad goals that are meant to guide the text, maps, and content of the plan itself. And then the, the final plan will have an implementation section, and it'll have a list of projects or recommendations, ordinance changes, or other items that are meant to implement the plan itself. So that, that implementation section will kind of be pushing the more regulatory part of, of the plan. We want to, when we get to that stage, coordinate that with all the legislative bodies. So if we, as we are planning on doing, if we recommend a capital improvements plan where projects are identified to achieve some of these goals, that, that capital improvements plan is approved by the legislative bodies and is developed in conjunction or coordination with the council or fiscal courts, or there are no projects in there that are specifically, you know, itemized to be funded and constructed in a certain timeline without the knowledge or agreement of the legislative bodies. So we are continuing to work on the plan. We hope to get all, everybody to agree on these goals and objectives so we can move to the next stage, but we are working on the text right now. We hope by the end of the year to have a draft version of the plan itself. The land use subcommittee is still planning to meet in November, in December, but that's the only of the six subcommittees that we plan on meeting the rest of the year. And with that subcommittee, we plan on finalizing the future land use map recommendation and the urban service boundary recommendations. And we're also going to talk about development inside and outside the urban service boundaries as far as minimum lot sizes and things like that. But those are the only two committees that are, can continue to meet, because we kind of have to get that stuff finalized before we have the draft plan together. But the remainder of the, of the plan, we're working on in-house, and when we have a draft version, then we'll start to meet with all the other subcommittees to bring that to a final draft version. And we intend to have at least one more public meeting in the early spring, late winter. winter. The goals themselves, uh, they, there are seven chapters, and they follow, they kind of follow, um, three required elements and, and four additional elements that have been done in the past, and we're gonna update, and we're all gonna, we're, we're kind of bringing flat, past plans forward into one, um, current plan that we can kinda carry forward from now on, so we don't have to pick and choose from elements of the plan that aren't required elements, so they haven't been done in many years. There are a couple of elements that haven't been done since nineteen ninety-one, the housing and the historic, um, in particular. I can summarize, if you'd like, each chapter, what it's about, or I can just, uh, take questions if there are specific questions. Kinda leave it up to you.
Yeah, they've, uh, they've had the documents, so it, it might be good just to see if there are questions. It's, it's really handy when, uh, such a large number of council members have been involved in the effort.
Yeah, yeah, and we really appreciate the involvement.
Any questions for Joe about the goals and objectives that you've been presenting? It's, it's an important topic, and I don't wanna rush it, but, but if there, if there aren't questions, I'm happy to read the resolution.
Mayor, I wanna make a quick comment. I would, I wanna, I do wanna thank Joe and, and Matt and certainly Megan for, for their efforts. I know all of us have been involved, and it's, it's been a lengthy process.
It is a long process. We've had three meetings a month sometimes.
And it's, it's, it's difficult to attend each and every one of those meetings, but they are there at each and every one of those meetings, and I think we feel like we're in good hands with, uh, with their leadership. So, anyway, we appreciate you putting us on the committee and, and, uh, we'll continue to see it through.
Correct. So no questions for Joe? What's for you?
A resolution approving and adopting the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan goals and objectives, whereas the comprehensive plan steering committee has recommended approval of goals and objectives for the next comprehensive plan update, and whereas the city has ninety days to consider and take action upon the proposed goals and objectives. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. The council does hereby approve the proposed goals and objectives for the next comprehensive plan update, dated the fourteenth day of November twenty sixteen.
Thank you. Members of the executive committee, you like to make that motion?
I'll second.
All right. If there are no, uh, no further questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Joe, you're four for four. Thank you. Three cities and one county. It's about the ratio, isn't it? Let's see, uh, under the cemetery, item ten, you have a, uh, a municipal order in your packet approving the purchase of a round pickup truck cemetery that was, uh, done on state bid, uh, price, and it is a budgeted, uh, budgeted amount.
Motion.
Motion's been made? Hand second. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Also, uh, while we're on the topic of the cemetery, there's a municipal order declaring, uh, some stuff surplus, uh, and y'all can take a look at those. There's a John Deere tractor and backhoe, some old loaders, weed eaters that don't run, a blower that doesn't run. Marvin, do you think this sound familiar to you?
Well, I didn't run after them.
It's funny, most of the stuff on the list says, "Doesn't run, doesn't run, doesn't run." So is there a motion to?
Full disclosure.
Thank you. Is that a motion taken?
Motion, motion.
Second, Karen? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Let's see, we have two inter-local agreements, uh, for the council tonight. Last week, Karen, uh, we, we had a meeting of the inter-local committee. Members of the, some members of the fiscal court, city council, me and the judge, uh, and Mr. Hartley, uh, went through two inter-local agreements. Uh, the first one was the inter-local agreement for code enforcement, uh, which kinda set out, uh, I think the biggest thing that inter-local does is, uh, sets out how we share the costs. Uh, we, we've decided to undertake this activity, we'd rather not pay for all of it ourselves, and the inter-local is written where forty-five percent of the cost will be paid by the city, forty-five percent by the county, five percent from Sadieville, and five percent from Stampin' Ground. Those communities wanted to have a little skin in the game, and it's appropriate that they do. Uh, they're gonna have appointments to the board. The issue that probably got, uh, Karen, I'm gonna try and remember this right, the issue that got the most discussion on the inter-local concerning the code enforcement agreement, came over the fact that we, there will be a five-person code appeals board. So the inter-local agreement anticipates appointing five people to this appeals board and two alternates. Uh, we want the alternates so that we are never without a forum. Uh, the way the, the ordinance is written, four of those appointments will be made by the three cities in the county, just straightforward. Each of the local jurisdictions involved in the inter-local get one appointment, so that makes up four. The fifth appointment, uh, will be done jointly between the city and the county, and the two alternates will be done jointly between the city and the county. Uh, the conversation that, that we had at the inter-local committee meeting, one of the fiscal court members, uh, would be more comfortable if there was language that said that the county's appointment has to come from outside the incorporated city limits of the three cities. In fact, it, it has to be obviously a, a rural appointment. What we discussed is, is the fact that it's the county's appointment.
They were, yeah.
They can appoint whoever they want, and I would hope they'd appoint somebody from a rural area, but it's their decision. I didn't think that it belonged in the inter-local agreement, since it's the court's choice. Uh, but one of the county members felt pretty strongly about that. And, uh, the way we, the way we left it, and the way we recommended it come to the court or the council, the inter-local committee can only recommend. It has no authority except to hear things and recommend. What we settled on is that the county was gonna check with Glenn Williams, their attorney, to see if, uh, designating a member from an unincorporated area was even legal or appropriate. They decided if, if Glenn's opinion was that they should not restrict themselves, that they asked that the language read that it be strongly encouraged that the county's appointment come from outside of the cities. And that's the way the fiscal court ended up approving the inter-local agreement, that it could be one or the other, and we're waiting on, uh, the county attorney to, to give us that. And it doesn't affect our appointments. If this is purely an issue for the fiscal court to resolve. So we're happy to bring you that inter-local agreement and vote on it with...
It's asking if the, the, the resolution says that you're basically approving both versions, and whichever one the county goes with is the one that we're going with, so...
And it has no effect on us whatsoever, just from, from whence they will make their choice.
You were thinking what we're saying.
That, that was a unanimous resul, um, recommendation of the inter-local committee, so I guess, are we ready to read that resolution?
Yeah.
Good.
A resolution approving an inter-local agreement between the city of Georgetown, city of Stampin' Ground, city of Sadieville, and Scott County, creating a joint code enforcement board and providing the code for code enforcement service and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the city of Georgetown has considered an inter-local agreement, creating a joint code enforcement board and providing for joint code enforcement service, and whereas the Scott County Fiscal Court has requested a revised provision in the agreement that still requires review of its legal counsel, who is currently unavailable, and whereas the city approves the provision in either its current or revised form. Whereas KRS sixty-five point two four oh requires the authorization of an inter-local agreement to be memorized by ordinance and resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Georgetown, Kentucky. Section one, that the interlocal agreement between the city of Georgetown, city of Stampin' Ground, city of Sadieville, and Scott County create a joint code enforcement board and provide for code enforcement service is hereby approved as attached in either its current version one or revised version two form, and specifically approves that version adopted by the Scott County Fiscal Court. Section two, that the mayor is authorized to execute the inter-local agreement, dated this fourteenth day of November twenty sixteen.
Motion.
Motion, thank you. Second, Ms. Hartley.
Some of we've been working on a while, it's good to get it over with.
Really is.
Ain't over yet.
No, just getting close.
But we're getting closer. What, what will remain, Marvin, uh, after, after we approve this is, uh, we need to get busy with our board appointments, uh, since that needs to be done for the year.
We need to hire this and that.
Still gotta get the other jurisdictions to pass their ordinances, too.
Yeah.
More importantly.
That's right. Uh, let's see, uh, this can be voice flip, can't it? It is a resolution.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Uh, the second inter-local that we discussed has to do with, uh, how the city and the county would like to propose that we operate the building at one twenty-five West Clinton Street. That is the former headquarters of Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service. And let me walk you through the scenario.
Yeah.
Or the evolution of how we got to this. Uh, you know, we, we, uh, we developed a little sticker shock when we first started and looking at the proposed building for the center of town location, and we began looking at other options. And we considered, uh, somebody said we considered the SFS building, I don't remember that very well.
Me neither.
We, we considered the SFS building, uh, we considered, uh, moving building inspection to the water company's offices, new offices at one thousand West Main Street. And, you know, potentially the county could have left electrical inspection where they were and continued to pay rent. A closer examination of the space at one thousand West Main Street showed that it was gonna need more work than we anticipated. It was not gonna be a move-in situation, there was gonna be a lot of work at the water company's place. And, and after we, we decided not to utilize the SFS building, uh, we went back to step one and tried to reevaluate our options. You know, talk to the judge about, uh, building a building with not stat plans and making it stick-built instead of steel-built and all those things. Uh, but in that process, we, we took a fresh look at the GMWSS building. And while I had been operating under the impression that was a sick building, uh, the building is actually in quite good condition. Uh, the damage that was done in the basement of the building has been repaired, where the, the two slabs, uh, on either side of the basement were buckled, and those have been completely dug up and repaired. Any drywall that was in the basement, uh, that was affected has been cut out. We were surprised when we inspected the building, even though it's been sitting unused for months now, it didn't smell musty or closed up. Basement is completely dry. We looked at the history, about every five years, the area floods. Only once in twenty-five years has the building gotten water in it, and it was the flood from a couple of years ago. Uh, and while the, the floodwater then was extreme enough to where it entered the front door of, the front door of the building, uh, it surprisingly only went about fifteen feet or so into the building. You can even see the mark on the carpet where it didn't completely overwhelm the first floor. Took the judge down there and looked at it, and we realized the building was completely useful. Asked Bob Willhite very directly the question that, that was on my mind, and it may be on your all's mind. And the question was simply, why should we put our staff in this building if you didn't put your staff in this building? And the answer was pretty straightforward. They didn't move out of the building because it was damaged, they moved out of the building because they had outgrown it. And they were already looking to move to other headquarters when this flood damage occurred, so it simply accelerated their effort to find a new, larger place. The water company, uh, Board of Commissioners has, uh, already decided that, that upon our request, they will deed us the building at zero cost. We already own it, we own the water company.
Yeah.
So, uh... But, so what this inter-local anticipates is that the building will be, the title to this building will be held in the city's name. All of the operating costs, the utilities and the eight thousand dollar a year flood insurance policy that's required for the building will be jointly, will be cost shared by the city and the county. We expect, we would like, before we move into the building, to have it painted and carpeted, so it's as fresh and nice and current as we can be. We think that's gonna be, we haven't gotten prices yet, we're guesstimating twenty to thirty thousand dollars that the county will share with us. We also worked out a provision in the inter-local. I had mentioned to you all that, that, uh, for at least ten years, Parks and Recreation had been inadvertently paying property insurance for properties that the city owned. And we fixed that for this year, but we wondered how to look back for the almost ten-year period that the county's been paying some of our insurance bills. And we wanted to make the county whole, because we operate as equal partners, but we really didn't want any cash to change hands. So what the judge and I decided is that this inter-local lasts ten years. It calls for, uh, the county to occupy the building with us and share all the cost, but on an annual basis, they will write off fifteen thousand dollars of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar insurance debt. So that at the end of the ten years of us jointly occupying the building, we will have no indebtedness to the county over this old insurance bill. We look back seven years to try and see if this was a fair number, and the premiums over those seven years averaged between thirty-two thousand and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. So we settled on a number of thirty thousand. Times the ten years, that gives us a raw number of three hundred thousand dollars of insurance premiums that Parks and Recreation had paid for the city that they shouldn't have. To set that situation right, we needed to pay the county a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Half of that amount. And we elected to do it through an inter-local agreement, so no cash changes hands. At the end, if we approve this inter-local, we will have avoided spending seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus to build a new building or to buy a building and renovate it. We will only be out the twenty to thirty thousand dollars to make it fresh, and we will have eliminated a hundred and fifty thousand dollar debt we have. So, so, uh, I will compliment the council on your decision not to purchase the SFS building. We went back to work and found a better solution at much less cost. Uh, fiscal court has already approved this inter-local agreement as well.
I'm gonna make the motion, ma'am, for approval.
Thank you. I'll second.
Let's wait and see if we wanna jump in.
Thank you. Any, any questions, any details I can clarify for what this'll look like? We also think we can do this pretty darn quickly.
I mean, by first of the year, I'd say close to it.
Uh, we won't miss it far, Marvin. Uh, we can get prices now and start moving. We'll, we'll want to, uh... We'll want to, where the water company had a drive-through window, pay window, and three pay windows in the lobby, we don't need that. But those are modular pieces that we think we can deconstruct, move the space around, and it'll work beautifully for our needs. We know that building inspection, electrical inspection, and code enforcement can go in there, and there will be sufficient room. Later, we may consider, and it's just a maybe, next year, consider the revenue commission going there as well. They're in the basement of the library, and it's a nice enough space. It's in no way a problem. But this could be nicer, I don't know. We're just, that's not a definite, we're just kinda play that out. Want to assure you that our plan with this building would be that we never occupy the basement.
Yeah, I agree with that one.
We just, we never, even for storage, Marvin.
It's kinda funny how we kinda come to consensus that we weren't ready to go to the SFS building, and we're gonna be able to get in and build it within three months since we made that decision. It would've took us a lot longer at SFS to get that fixed up and ready to go.
Yeah, this is a...
And financially, a lot more.
This is a good outcome.
Yep.
So we, have we invited on that, have we, Madam Card?
Yep.
We have motion and second? Are there other questions?
I just wanna make a quick comment. I love the idea about the freshening up of the inside, the paint, the carpet, whatever needs to be done. The outside might need a little bit of sprucing up as well in terms of landscaping, maybe in the spring, seal coating.
It's actually really pretty.
Actually, yeah, it actually looks really good.
All right, all right.
Bob actually commented, it looks better now than it did when they were there.
Better now.
All right, all right. And then the other thing, Mayor, that you and I had talked about, and Mayor had, and I did, was some additional parking, and I think I sure'd have thought or two, that maybe we could talk to some of the property owners in the area about maybe donating some space or providing a parking easement to improve the parking arrangement in that area.
Yep.
Dave and I discussed a couple of options there, and Kentucky Utilities might hold one of the keys where events could be moved. This, we got our, a preliminary report from the University of Cincinnati today that I haven't had the chance to cycle through. It's only two hundred and twenty-nine pages long. So we'll be working on that one, but I think that this is a good step for us, and we can occupy this building and make it work well.
Good.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, thank you. We've already accepted the Kentucky American Grant. Item twelve B is a resolution requesting permission to apply for assistance to firefighter grant. Chief Ford?
This grant is due, actually, this coming Friday, but what we're looking forward to following this grant is to update our vehicle exhaust extraction system that we have in all three of our fire stations. The, it's getting old, it's been there for a while, and it uses like air technology to hold that boot onto the truck. They have it now to where it's a magnet style, it's just a newer upgraded technology. So we're wanting to apply for this grant so we could update that. And it is ninety percent federal, ten percent city match, and we base this fifty-five thousand, fifty-five hundred would come out of our general operating expenses. We have that money in our budgets covered.
Motion.
Motion's been made, seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chief. Item thirteen on your agenda is municipal order adopting revisions to the employee handbook. And for any of you that may prefer to print out the packet, you know that the employee handbook
Is huge.
Took up a lot of pages. So the really key points to this employee handbook that I wanted to touch on before we discuss specifics is the last time we revised the employee handbook was in two thousand and ten, so we're now six years, and over that six-year period, we've made decisions, we've changed some procedures, some laws have changed, standards have changed, and it's just time for us to update after a six-year period. We emailed this to you five weeks ago, so hopefully, hopefully by then, from my computer, it's had time to scroll off twice and then we find it again. But you've had it for about five weeks. It would be our intention, as we consider this employee handbook, to make it effective, if approved, that we make it effective January the first seventeen, so that we can have the month of July to make sure our employees understand the changes and sign for the document, and then have it become effective January the first seventeen. And since it's such a long ordinance, Megan has prepared a summary of what we consider the substantial changes to be within the handbook. I don't think much of it is controversial. It's primarily adopting things that we've already decided to do over the years. We would, if council is comfortable with passing the municipal order tonight, we'd be happy with that, but if you'd like two more weeks before we actually vote on adopting it, we're comfortable with that as well. We wanna do what you all are comfortable doing. Megan, with that introduction...
I guess I would just ask, from reading the substantial changes, this was emailed out with the handbook all those weeks ago, are there any of those changes that you have questions about, like?
You gotten any feedback from any of the employees on anything, or do they not, have they not seen it yet?
The employees haven't seen it. A lot of things that are in the revisions have been requests from employees, oddly enough. For example, the change to bereavement leave. Our policy leaves out bereavement leave for the relationships such as mother-in-law, son-and-daughter-in-law, grandparent and grandchild. So we've had a lot of situations where employees have called to ask what type bereavement leave they get for those relationships, and when I've said none, they've been reasonably upset. You know, why can't I have a day for that? So I thought that with employees really voicing their concerns over that, that it would be compassionate of us to perhaps put the one-day extension in for the extended family members for one day. The acting officer pay, the temporary interim assignment pay, those have been requests from employees. The Fire Department's union, even though we don't collectively bargain with that union, every year we meet and confer with them, and for two years, they've been asking us to implement acting officer pay, so that when their lower-ranking members of the department fill in for someone in the higher ranks, that they'd be able to be compensated in a very small amount for that, five percent.
I think it compensated for that during that, well, I think I read it after they're there five days, then they get compensated for whatever time, and then when they roll back, then when they roll back, they roll back to the other pay, is that correct?
That would be the temporary interim assignment pay. That's for situations, for example, when we were absent a police chief and our two captains filled in as interim police chief, that's where that increase would fall in. But the acting officer pay is specific to the fire department. Their hierarchy is the only one that requires this sort of thing. When we have a police sergeant or lieutenant absent, another one on shift can just pick it up. But in the fire industry, it's not that simple. They have to actually have each truck with an acting officer on that truck. So that's why they've asked for that.
There's one area of the employee handbook that we think is necessary from a management point of view, and some of our employees may push back a little bit, but we expect people to show up for work.
Yep.
And we expect for 'em to be on time. So we've got firmer language in this handbook about if you decide to use all of your vacation pay and all of your sick pay, and then you miss work.
No pay.
Well, it's not just no pay, but that's an unexcused absence. You, and that will lead to a warning, it'll lead to a second warning, and it could lead to termination. We expect people to work.
Sort of like what Walmart did. If you're nine minutes late, come to work, or you leave nine minutes early, you lose a point, a half a point. After eight points in a year running six months, the ninth point, you're automatically terminated.
Very similar.
And we're gonna be, we're gonna be more firm with tardies.
Yeah.
It's, we, we've got a great work environment, a good culture, but occasionally, we just need to remind folks that you gotta be at work, you gotta be on time, and we've reflected that in this handbook.
And having a more objective, consistent way of doing that will help us manage the system completely. And then the third piece of that is clocking in and out. We have an automated timekeeping system. We pay from that timekeeping system. If employees fail to clock in or out, we have the higher ability to have inaccuracies, and we don't wanna do that. So we want to also implement the same rules for clocking in and out. If you miss that opportunity to clock in or out three times, there's a warning. Six times, it's a final warning. Nine times could be a termination. It's that important for us to have those clock in and outs recorded so that we can pay them accurately and have a good record.
On your sick time that they earn and vacation time, one day per month for sick time, one day for vacation every, per month?
Every month.
Does that include, like some of the people that's been there for fifteen, is it...
No, that's why I said a minimum of one day of vacation, because once you hit five years, that climbs up a bit, once you hit ten, it climbs again.
Everybody's doing the same thing, Walmart does the same thing. You work a, you know, you work a week, if you've been there twenty years, you already earn eight hours of vacation that week, or something like that. You know, mine's like six point one hours a week for a week's work, sick time, vacation time, which they've accumulated altogether. All of it's called PTO time.
Personal time off.
Yep.
For whatever reason.
But everybody's doing this, and I agree with what you're doing. It just makes it a lot easier on the bookkeeping, and people knows when you don't have the time left, you don't come to work.
That's a problem.
It was a problem.
Well, and it really affects us in public works. We've got eleven thousand households that we need to pick up the garbage every week. Robert's got to know, he's got people to operate the trucks.
Yep. You gotta do what you gotta do.
So we're, again, we don't wanna push you all to a level you're not comfortable on, but we're okay with approving this tonight if you all are.
I didn't read anything in here that was out of line at all, personally.
Mayor, I'll make a motion if everybody's comfortable with it. Thank you.
I'll second the motion for you.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no further questions from Megan, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, ma'am. Item fourteen on your agenda is something we're pretty excited about, and I think the Police Committee has heard about this, and the Finance Committee has heard about this. An opportunity, we, the two items under the police part of the budget, one is a resolution to accept a grant to hire a victim advocate. And the second item will be a first reading of an amendment to our personnel ordinance to allow us to hire that victim's advocate. Couple of things I can tell you about it. Chief, I assume you can help us with questions? I think the first question that I had and that Ms. Erdley had was, would this in any way intrude on the good work that Debbie Birdwhistles already doing for victims? And we've both been assured that's not the case. Ms. Birdwhistle, Ms. Birdwhistle does victim advocacy work for more major crimes.
She works out of Gordy Shaw's office.
Out of Comwest Attorney's Office.
Yes, and I can speak very highly of the work that she's done over the years. I've worked with her for my entire career here. We think so highly of her and the work she's doing. We've dedicated space to her in our police department, so we wanna bring her in and partake of the good that she does for the community. So, yeah, this will no way interfere with that.
So this will not interfere with Ms. Birdwhistle's work. What this will do is give the police department an employee that can work with victims. We're thinking primarily here on domestic abuse situations that are so difficult to deal with, and that are, we're certainly not immune to that in Scott County. In fact, when I was, worked with, on the United Way Fund Distribution Committee, we saw data that suggested that Scott County may have a higher incident rate of domestic violence than some of our neighboring counties do. I don't know if that's still accurate or not, but we certainly have a need, the police department sees a need. This grant, this is a two-step action. The grant will come within three to five thousand dollars of covering the total cost of this salary and benefits. Of that remaining three to five thousand dollars, I'm gonna expect the police department to hunt and search, and their departmental budget for that three to five thousand dollars, and not pitch that back to the Finance Committee. So we think this is a major step forward for our police department in terms of victim services. So what we would first ask you to do is consider a resolution to accept this fifty thousand dollar grant.
Mayor, you have a, ask the question, I know Chief Swanigan already knows what the question is.
You'd like me to answer before you answer?
No way. What about next year?
Next year. This is gonna be done with an understanding that it is a one-year contract.
Okay, in the ordinance, do we have that stated in the ordinance part of it? Because I got real excited about this, and then I read the ordinance of establishing the position, but in that establishing the position, do we have, because when the person's hired, I'd rather it be in there saying that this is for a year or till the grant runs out. Is there any way to put that language in the ordinance?
We were gonna put that language into her contract.
Sorry, so with this, you actually have to do a contract with the employee?
They will be an employee, but we want a clear understanding on the front end with the council and with this employee, that it is a grant-funded position. And while, we know from other departments, typically, these are funded year by year
Right.
For multiple years.
Money where it's at.
But they're just year by year. I want us to be protected, and I want us to have clear language that if we don't get the grant, we're under no obligation to keep the employee.
So we can do, we pass that, and we change the ordinance and have a job description and put it up in a contract? Is that what we're doing? Yes. Okay, and we can do that. We wouldn't just make it as a contract, as a contract labor, strictly based on the grant as a contract and not change it as a...
They're not a contract, they're not an independent contractor.
Okay.
They're an employee, but the person would be an employee who is essentially working under a term.
Just, I'm good with it as long as it's somewhere in there that the council knows, and it automatically ends if the grant ends.
That was our concern as well.
Okay.
And in meeting with this individual, we made it perfectly clear that this position will last as long as the grant funding lasts. When the grant funding dries up, or we choose to no longer continue the program, whatever happens, then the program's over as well as the employee. The program's been around since nineteen eighty-four. It's called VOCA, or Victims of Crime Act. So it's been around, it's established, it's a federal program, it's not something they just started recently, it's well-established, it's well-funded.
We're getting it because of the increase of our need here.
Mm-hmm, exactly right.
Correct. We're kind of, we're kind of pioneering for a police department. A lot of attorney's offices, Comwest Attorney's Office and things like that have them. Lexington Police Department has four on staff right now, Louisville has several on staff, so for a department our size, we're kind of breaking some new ground, but it is definitely a need. And, you know, for four years now, we've been talking about providing more services to our citizens, and this does exactly that, at no cost.
Well, I'm good with that. Another question on the contract, will that contract come back to the council for approval with that, since it's a fifty thousand dollar amount or not?
It's not, I would say no, because it's not a, it's not a contract for hiring a service, it's simply a memorialization of the fact that the person's employment with the city is time-limited. I mean, it's not a contract to, they're not, it's not a contract to pay them, because they're not guaranteed, they could get fired after a week, you know, if something bad could happen. It's not a, we're hiring you for a year, it's a, it's just a... It's a, it's just a, a term that says, should the grant money not be renewed, we're under no obligation to rehire you.
And that is a protection too on us for them being terminated too?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
And it also, I lost my thought.
It's been a long night, eh?
It's been a long night. There's been too many, too many, yes, sir.
A simple question. With having one person in this capacity, what are their hours of availability? I mean, I know situations happen twenty-four hours a day, so.
She's gonna be available to our officers twenty-four seven. Her normal hours will be probably normal business hours, eight to four, something along those lines. But the availability will be there. If we've got a major incident, a major domestic or something, we need to have access to some services, and we can reach out to her, and she can, she can respond.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the grant.
So, all right, Karen has made a motion to accept the grant to hire a victim of, victims of crime advocate. Second, thank you. And if there are no questions about the resolution, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, to put this into effect, we'd like to have first reading of the amendment to the personnel ordinance. And I appreciate the, both members of the police committee being willing to jointly sponsor this. And I failed to point out earlier during our detailed conversation about the ethics ordinance that Mark, appreciate your sponsorship of that ethics ordinance.
I'm now amending section two dash one 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 subsection C of the code of ordinances to create the position of victim's advocate in the police department. Summary, one, amend section two dash one 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 C of the code of ordinances which sets forth the classifications associated pay grades and authorized positions for each department to establish, and one position of victim's advocate grade six in the police department. Two, provides for repil of consistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination. The City Clerk's Office, one hundred North Cork Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. Introduced and publicly read for the first time November fourteenth, twenty sixteen.
Thank you. That will constitute first reading. Moving down to item fifteen, and my prediction on this meeting was two and a half hours.
You've not missed much.
And I'm, hey, look.
Our Bengals are kicking off.
I had four.
I had four.
They were predicting a four-hour meeting.
Who was?
Please, two.
He heard me, he heard me say that, and he said, well, we'll hurry it up.
I said, we'll do it in two and a half.
And he cut his comments in about half tonight.
Yeah, he's on to me.
That's right. Item fifteen on your agenda. We, everybody knows that we lost one of our one-armed garbage trucks. Publicized incident, a very tragic incident. We've been operating without that truck. It's been really hard. Robert has made do by using a, a rear loader truck, which requires more labor and more time. And we, we, as of this point, we're still dealing with the adjusters, and we're not sure if our truck will be replaced or repaired. It may be repaired. But right now, it is still being held in the impound lot for the coroner's office. So we, we've got to operate. We've got trash to pick up every week. So we, we've got a municipal order in your packet to approve rental of a garbage truck. It's very expensive. It's ten thousand dollars a month. And Robert definitely needs this piece of equipment during the holiday season, Thanksgiving, and we're approaching Christmas. Last year, we picked up an extra ten tons of garbage just during the holiday period. We, per our requirements, we got three bids, or three estimates. We are not recommending the lowest price. You'll notice from, from your bids in your packet that there was one estimate for seventy-five hundred dollars a month. They don't have a truck available, so they don't meet our need.
Right.
The one that we're recommending, we can have that truck here tomorrow, and we can begin using it. We anticipate using this truck, Robert, at least two months?
Yeah, and talking to Stacy and Andrew and everybody and the mayor, you know, we don't know how long our truck's gonna be tied up. Been two months already. We still have a set on an adjustment, whether they're gonna fix it or be a total loss. So Stacy and the mayor, if we could look at something just to get us past Christmas, first of the year, that would be a tremendous help for the amount of stuff we're picking up. We're, it takes actually about a truck and a half on the rear loader to pick up what this truck does. We've got leaves going on right now, trying to get some other stuff to do. Trying to get another day or two for potholes before the plant shuts down. But I don't have a manpower for that, because we gotta, because the garbage's gotta come first. I didn't like the prices. I mean, they're high, the seventy-eight hundred a month from premier was the cheapest. They also have a seven hundred fifty delivery fee, and when you take it back, seven hundred fifty dollar return fee. So that kind of ups the price a month. But they were the lowest. I was wanting to go with them, but when I called the guy back, they'd already, the one they had, they let go. He said he did not know when they would get another one, so.
We don't act on this, and you might not get it this.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, the one, the one in municipal, I was told we'll be here through tomorrow at least.
Motion, ma'am. We don't want to wait too much longer. Put a call in, Robert. Call him, buddy.
Don't worry, I'll be there at seven in the morning.
Motion's been made and seconded. Yeah, are there any, any questions for Robert? We, we understand this is a pricey, short-term fix. But we, we also, we're reluctant to make a purchase until after we get our consultant report. We, we just, we're so close to getting that report, this rental makes sense for a short term. If there's no further questions for Robert, all in favor say aye? Opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this your first Christmas picking up?
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be better this, because it's Saturday, Sunday, so you'll be better this year than if it was.
I'm, I'm just hoping to get through Thanksgiving.
One holiday at a time, Karen.
It is gonna be a little better.
Yeah.
Be a lot money, though, after Christmas.
Oh, gosh, ooh, tons of garbage.
Now, something, just to prep the council, it's a, it's a management issue, and it's a personnel issue that, that we'll handle. But, you know, the, the, the chief has worked holidays all his professional career. That's not new to him. And it's getting harder and harder for us to have success picking up a day early. It's hard to communicate to people about picking up a day early. And we're gonna have to do that this Thanksgiving. We, we talked about it today. We're gonna have to pick up a couple of our biggest neighborhoods before on Wednesday, when they would normally be picked up on Thursday. And we'll have some unhappy citizens, because it always, somebody doesn't get that message. What Robert and I talked about today is, he's gonna start, he will probably start requiring public works employees to work the Friday after Thanksgiving.
You almost have to. You really do.
We're, we're growing too much.
It's too big a load to miss a day. So.
You know, and honestly, the community kind of expects it, because I ran into that with Christmas, and trying to give the guys so that they could have a holiday like the others were, but you just really, you couldn't.
Well, we've had to, we've had to at the recycling center, because they were always closed on Monday anyway. When you get to Monday holidays, they were taking Tuesday off. So we changed that to where they work Tuesday. They weren't happy about that, but I explained to them that eighty percent of the city employees work holidays anyway, so. I mean, you know, I don't, I would love for everybody to get as much holiday time as they can, but we just can't do it anymore. We, we've gotta get this, get it picked up.
Yeah, if you don't do it, you just don't realize how much trash gets put out at those holidays.
Then you get a truck breakdown or something, or three, four Collins C. You know, it, it just makes it hard on everybody else.
Well, the majority of the places are just closed that Thanksgiving Day anyway.
Yeah, well, you can't, the landfill's closed anyway.
But Friday, it's open, it's, most places are.
But Friday, everybody's back to work, so the majority of places back to work on Friday.
They're just, I mean, a whole lot of people work, not just the city.
Midnight Thanksgiving, night for bliss.
Retailers.
So Robert's really trying to think through this holiday inconvenience. And if we're gonna give good service, it, it might need, our employees need to work rather than trying to educate eleven thousand consumers.
If you get anybody to volunteer this year, let them work it.
I think that's, I think that's the best plan, but, but I'm kind of new. I wanna look and see.
Are you gonna, are you gonna, thinking about trying to have them work this year?
Not this year.
Okay, go through and see.
We are gonna work the twenty-third of Chris, twenty-third of December, which is actually a scheduled holiday.
It's Friday.
Because it's the Friday before the Saturday, Christmas Eve. We are gonna work that Friday.
So they'll make, they'll make next.
I've already told them that. But we are gonna work that. We're gonna work, come in, if we get done early, they can go home. But we are gonna work that.
It's a little extra holiday pay for you, but we think it's worth it.
I mean, it's not like they're doing it for free. They're still gonna get, they're gonna get regular pay in their holiday pay.
Right.
Just like the police and fire do. And dispatch, just like they do.
Well, I know they're not excited about, but it's a good plan for you to do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can't, we ain't gonna make everybody happy, but, you know, we gotta do what's best for.
There's a whole city you're trying to make happy.
Yeah.
That's tough, isn't it?
All right, well, Robert, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Okay, my over-under is.
You got seven minutes.
I got seven minutes, and there's a.
That's a minute apiece.
There's, that's a minute apiece. This is a piece of cake. Mark, can we start with you tonight?
Mine will take at least seven minutes.
All right, well, go ahead.
Yeah, I can do it. Quick, you and I had a discussion a little over a week ago about whether you wanna call it a food truck or a concession truck that we're starting to see now in more than one place within our city limits on a regular basis. Several things, and it doesn't have to be done, I mean, I know we're coming up on the end of the year, and we'll have, I think, two or maybe three more meetings left. So maybe sometime after the beginning of next year. As Georgetown continues to grow, and downtown continues to be even better than it is now with restaurants and/or other establishments, that three today that I see on a regular basis throughout the city limits, three trucks, that is, probably will grow in the future. And do we have several questions to ponder? Do we have anything right now that pertains to those type of, whether it's a concession truck or a food truck? Any items or ordinances that pertain to that? If not, and, or to any other cities within the state that do have ordinances that pertain to, or that directly relate to food trucks, and what is allowed, what is not allowed, how they're governed, what kind of taxes they pay, if any? I'd like to see if we can maybe look at that information. I guess that's it in a nutshell. And again, I know as we move forward, I'd like to see if we can have some more, more discussion on this item.
Mark and I had a pretty detailed conversation, and, and others have mentioned it as well.
You've been asked about it by different people.
And I tell you what, kind of bringing it up is, we, Mark's right. We've got a couple of food trucks who are regulars in certain parking lots. The question, we, we had a lot of questions, but, but among the questions we need to consider is, if they're on private property, that's one thing. If they're on a city street, is that a different thing? Do we create, do the, do the food trucks have an unfair advantage over a bricks and mortar restaurant owner who is paying property taxes and paying taxes? Other cities, as they've gotten larger, and they've, or food trucks have had to eventually address these issues. And Lexington, Lexington just turned themselves inside out with this issue for about a year and struggled with it. But Mark's right, the questions are beginning to be asked. So just for, for our future reference, that's a good point, Mark.
Well, I think it's the food trucks, and also, and some of you all may have seen it, is the truck that drives around town that makes the keys. The lock, you know, so there's a lot of mobile businesses now, but a lot of it is with bricks and mortar, too. You know, we pay certain taxes, so.
And.
Different things to consider with kind of mo, mobile businesses, you know.
And it's, it'll be a question we need to explore with the revenue commission as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Whose license and who's paying occupational taxes and who's not. But these food trucks are very popular, and people like them. It really is trending now. And, but it begs the question of, of when and to what extent we regulate them. Thank you, Mark. Chip?
I relinquish my one minute to the chair.
Karen?
I had some complaints about parking on Bourbon Street, which is a slash police slash code, really, because there are cars that the tires are flat, and they never move them and that kind of thing down on the Bourbon Street. Code enforcement years ago was down there and kind of cleaned it up, and then they go away, and then they seem to come back again. So there's, it's parking on Bourbon Street that's, broken down cars or whatever.
Anything else, Karen?
That's it.
Good, David?
I don't think so.
Mark?
I'm gonna let the ladies have mine if they need it.
You're gonna give them, we still got two minutes left, sir. Why the gentleman?
I'm gonna give them a chance.
I'm not ready, no.
Talk to Billy.
I've got something to say.
Wait a minute there, I'm gonna take mine back.
When I was doing a lot of campaigning, a lot of campaigning, I ran into a lot of people that live in the Pavilion, and I mentioned it before, they're still talking to me seriously about that stoplight at the end. And I just wondered, Kyle had said possibly that they would do a traffic study to see, and if it could be done between three, three and four thirty or so, when it's the school buses and things that are coming, and trying to turn left toward Cracker Barrel is where the residents of the Pavilion are saying it's a huge problem. So I just wanted to remind, to see if possibly that study could be done on that.
This is the intersection of Pavilion Drive and Champion.
Yes, sir.
Part of the Pavilion right there, right across from the mansion.
And then I got one more little thing to say. I'm gonna get through this. Try to hold it together. Just wanted to say how grateful to be able to serve a second term as your city council. And I want to thank everybody, and I love this job.
Thank you.
Should've said that first before the traffic.
It's eight thirty.
You win the bunny. It's a rewarding job.
Why did you pinch me? Why did you pinch me?
It's more of a rewarding job than it is.